Sounds good. All right. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Ellis, can you do roll call?
Sure. Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Phyllis Harkin here, David Harper.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Dan Miller.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Witty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
I'm here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so now it's time for public comment on the consent agenda, which is just the minutes of the May 19th meeting, or any items that are not on the agenda tonight. So tonight, we have two agenda items for the Park at Rock Creek and for Resolute. So if you have any public comment outside of those items, now's the time to do that. So because we're in this pandemic, we're doing this meeting virtually. So if you do want to make public comments, you'll need to raise your hand using the raise your hand function. If you've dialed in on your phone, that dial hand or that raise hand function is dialing star nine. And just note that you'll be muted until you're recognized by me. And then one of the staff will unmute you and will let you know you can speak. We're asking everybody to limit comment to five minutes. And if you come up on, if you're coming up on five minutes, I'll probably interrupt you and just give you a heads up and ask you to wrap up. So with that, is there anybody who has any comments on the, not any non-agenda items or consent agenda items? There is one hand up. That's Kelly McCollay. And all that staff, unmute her. Let me know when that's ready.
Sorry, I was.
There you go, Kelly, I think you're now ready to go. If you could.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just got in a few minutes late, so I missed half your talk. I just wanted to comment, I don't know if it's now or later on your, about this Harris property.
Yeah, that's, that'll be a little bit later. We have a presentation. This is just non-agenda items now.
Okay, I'll wait till then. Oh, can I, yeah, I do have something. All right, I'll talk again then, thank you.
Okay. All right, again, this is for non-agenda items. So we don't see any hand raises. And we'll go ahead and move on. So we do have a consent agenda for minutes from the May 19th meeting. Item 3A, draft PC from May 19th, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve those minutes.
Right, Commissioner Reese. I'll second, that's fine. Second, Commissioner McCool, and we'll have to do an audio vote. Fellas, you'll take that?
Yes. Bob McCool.
Yes.
Lisa Ritchie. Lisa Ritchie.
Yes, sorry.
David Harper.
Yes.
Jerry Malia.
Yes.
Ben Miller.
Yes.
Jason Reese.
Yes.
Anthony Stewart.
Yes.
Steve Witty.
Yes.
Phyllis Harkin, yes.
Okay. All right, that motion passes, minimus. So next is we're going to continue the meeting to, and hearing to review and comment on final subdivision plot for Rock Creek Ranch filing 25, a Rock Creek Ranch BUD amendment number 15. And a final site, final plat site, plat site plan for the Park at Rock Creek. A final plot to subdivide the property to create one developable whole lot for the multifamily apartment development proposed and three tracks, including track A along the northern edge of Hudson Harris reservoir, which is proposed to be dedicated to the town. Item number 4A, an amendment to Rock Creek Ranch BUD to allow for the proposed residential use of the property. This BUD amendment proposes to change the existing zoning from Regional Employment and Activity Center, or RAC, to residential 2A zoning. Item 4B is final site, final plat site plan for the Park at Rock Creek Development, which includes 180 multifamily apartments in addition to a clubhouse leasing center and public parking over the 22.78 acre property that I, which is item 4C. This is a continuation of the hearing, so it is currently, let's see, so the, the, let's see, we closed the public hearing. We're recommending that we open, reopen the public hearing. Fellas, do I need a motion to do that? Or?
That's a good question, is Dan there?
Yeah, you can put it to a, to a motion to reopen.
Okay, so let me, let me just throw it out there. So the staff has some additional information and the applicant has some small presentations to respond to some of the concerns that we were about to go into discussion on last week. So our options are, we don't reopen the hearing and just keep it closed and have our discussion and move forward. Or I reopen the public hearing to allow the applicant to do his presentation and Stephen to do his. So we're, I'm recommending the latter, but we'll need a motion and approval from the, from the commission to do that.
Move to approve, move to reopen the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Ritchie.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Stewart, all in favor, we'll do a verbal.
Okay. Ritchie, Lisa Ritchie.
Yes.
David Harper.
No.
Okay, no. Jerry Malia.
Yes.
Ben Miller.
Yes.
Jason Reese.
Yes.
Anthony Stewart.
Yes.
Steve Witty.
Yes.
Bob McCool.
Yes.
Phyllis Harkin, yes. Thank you.
Passes eight to one, if I did my count right. All right, so the, I guess I'm officially reopening the public hearing and there will be one minute. So I don't have proof of publication needs to be verbally said again, fellas, I think that was done already, but.
Yeah, that's fine, that was already.
All right, so then let's start with staff presentation. Stephen, you had a presentation.
Yeah. Good evening, Stephen Williams Town Staff, I'll share my screen real quick. And walk you through kind of what Bob's already said, so let me enlarge that. You guys can see that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Tonight's development item, as stated, involves a subdivision plat rezoning or PUD amendment and a final plat site plan within Rock Creek Ranch. PC initially considered this application on the May 19th meeting, which was continued until tonight. Staff is not planning on rehashing the individual components or details of this proposal, but we are available for questions. The memo addendum that was provided to you guys for this meeting covers the changes that staff and the applicant discussed after that meeting. So we met and PC, you know, had a lot of questions, but seemed to provide specific direction about, you know, concerns related to the proximity of the clubhouse, the proximity of the pool to the reservoir. And other facets of the discussion touched on the amount of parking. So one of the suggestions staff had was to see about eliminating the parking or reducing the parking north of the clubhouse and actually changing this to parallel parking versus perpendicular parking in order to shift the clubhouse further to the north and shift the pool kind of northwest as well, with the goal of meeting that 100 foot setback. So what you're seeing here shows the current, or the prepared final plat site plan document, which showed a 97 and a half foot setback to the clubhouse and a 51 and a half foot setback to the pool. So the applicant agreed to look into this and explore this possibility and determined that they could move both if they were to transition that parking to parallel parking. So doing so would allow for almost 105 foot setback of their clubhouse and an additional four feet of setback from the closest point, and it is measured from the property line versus the reservoir. So it's a little bit further to the actual water line. But the decision was made in conversation with Boulder County that it's just more consistent to measure from their property line than measure from the water line, which fluctuates. So that's what we had them measure from. So the, those are the two benefits. The exchange would be to go from 15 perpendicular parking spaces to six parallel parking spaces. And then we would shift, so if you go back up to the original proposal, there's one handicap parking space northeast of the clubhouse, that parking space shifts to the west so that we don't lose it. And then six parallel parking spaces are available to the north. And this, this is done with the thought of all the other constraints of making these kind of changes. So there's a huge ripple effect that happens generally when you try to make site changes of this late at this stage. But the utility lines are all in here. This is a fairly hard line, it doesn't change the width of the access through here, it doesn't necessarily impact the utility or grading design. So it was, it was good of them to look into this and they're willing to do it. And I'll turn it over to them to kind of go over the finer detail, final details of that part of it. They also looked at the parking for the trailhead, and we had some concerns about this being just not, I guess, oriented correctly. It was a little too far east, so they changed that to kind of balance that parking on the, on the west side and move it further from the reservoir as well. This still gives opportunity to screen this parking lot with landscaping between the right of line, which is that Boulder dash line and the parking area. And then the other context for this is that you can't really have an access point to this trailhead any further west because it would interfere with access in here, it would cause stacking. So they put it as far, the access as far west as possible, and then they kind of looped the parking back to the west. So and then they also provided an updated addendum to their environmental study. So I imagine they'll get into that as well. But that's it for my, my kind of brief presentation. I'm happy to turn it over to them or answer any questions that you guys have.
All right, do commissioners have any questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Miller, just unmute yourself and go for it.
Just one question, is there any way that we can ensure the parking for the trailhead is saved for the public and not used as overflow for the multifamily?
It's our property, so we can sign it and we'll control it if we, if we need to or have the police department or the sheriff's department control it, but same as any other trailhead. But you're right, the proximity would probably lead to more overflow parking being used there, but it's just a matter of whether or not there's an issue. I guess it could be used for any of the developments around there too, but we can certainly sign it, it'll be our property.
Do you have any thoughts, Commissioner Miller, on how to do it?
I think that's probably one of those ones where we can see if it becomes an issue, but it's certainly, you know, for, if it's tightly parked, it could certainly be used as overflow, but like we can wait and see.
Okay, and the context there that was in the staff memo, as far as the parking goes, is that the tandem parking, you know, like this, this application, it was kind of clear listening, listening to it all on the May meeting that, you know, discussions on this started way back in 2016, you know, with concept plan meetings and stuff. And the tandem parking limit is something that we've done, but it's also something that was directed to us, you know, to kind of hold the line on by a prior board. And then the intent really was that tandem parking might not get used. So if you had a car that was buried in beyond another car, you either, you know, have to move the first car to get the second car out, so you might not use it, or it may just be used for storage. But with the number of parking spaces that are tandem, there's 70. The percentage of those, like, we're losing eight parking spaces in total. I don't know that we have a concern that eight of those, like, you know, all 62 of those units are going to be used that way. So I think the percentage wise, we're more comfortable with it. And the other context, I guess, is that the Rock Creek PUD has a higher parking limit. So for downtown Superior, for instance, a three bedroom unit would require two parking spaces and Rock Creek requires two and a half. So they're already meeting a higher standard because that standard was set back in 1987 than what a more current standard would probably apply. So staff feels comfortable with the amount of parking, but it is something that you guys need to weigh in on, and so will the town board.
Any other questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? All right, the applicant has presentation, now's the time.
Good evening, Chairman McCool and members of the Planning Commission. Back in front of you, Diana Rail from Norris Design. For the record, 1101 Bannick Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. And we do, Stephen did a great job as far as the the update, he, I won't reiterate, I have a couple things to add. And if we can go to the next slide, our full team is here again to answer any other questions. You've been introduced to all those folks, so they're all somewhere on the screen at this point. Quietly waiting. So a couple of things, we wanted to talk about really three things that have changed since the last hearing. We, we heard loud and clear about the sensitivity to the vicinity with the clubhouse and the pool at the reservoir area, the parking as well for the trailhead. And then because of the public comment, we actually had our environmental consultant from ERO, Ron Bean, who you heard from at the last hearing. He went back out on site on the 27th of May and kind of did another assessment just to, you know, check some balances. And, and that report should be in your pocket tonight, so I'll, I'll get there. But the first area I wanted to reiterate was the clubhouse and pool shift. So if we can go to the next slide, this kind of zooms in that area that Stephen mentioned. His suggestion about taking the perpendicular parking, there were 15 spaces there previously and changing that to parallel spaces, shifting that ADA space to the west portion of the building, which actually is probably a better spot. It's more close to the front door there. And then being able to shift the building to help alleviate the concerns with the adjacency to the reservoir and being able to move that building such that it is in excess of the 100 foot, which is the recommended distance. So this is the same graphic, similar graphic that Stephen had as well, wanted to show you the detail of being able to shift the clubhouse and the pool. And then also, I wanted to address the trail because we're able to move the trail as well to shift away from that kind of the, the small cove there, we're able to move that as well. And it actually changes the total square footage of what the town, what would be dedicated to the town as far as tract A goes. So we're adding about 1,000 square feet to the tract because of all of the shifting. So you get a little bit more land in this scenario. And then I wanted to just real quickly kind of address some of the comments that we heard from Ryan Welsh with OSAAC as far as his comments go from the hearing about removing the parking. And I'll get to that, I don't want to change slides yet, but as far as the trail goes, you know, there were comments about whether the trail should remain concrete for ADA access or should it go to crusher fine surface, which is a soft surface. And our thought, with all things being equal there, both being ADA accessible, the, the concrete was the decision we landed on to, because from a town's long-term maintenance standpoint, it's easier to maintain concrete. The the crusher fines will ultimately wear and need to be reinforced over time. So our thought was to maintain the concrete. The also, also an additional thought was that the concrete will actually kind of in a psychological way, people will tend to likely stay on the trail if it's concrete versus crusher fines. And we feel like if it's a more natural surface like crusher fines, folks will probably try to meander off of that trail and create their own small footpaths because really there's no sort of finer limits to that trail. So just psychologically, we think that concrete is probably a better choice for the town. But again, if you'd like to discuss that in more detail, we're happy to, to have that conversation. And then, let's see, one thing I wanted to mention too, in addition to the building being 105-ish plus or minus feet away now from the property line, we've measured the high water line, the building is actually 225 feet from that high water line of the reservoir. So that is a significant distance as well and a very good setback. We also talked about sort of the kind of the theme of the pool. And from the renderings that we showed, you know, it sort of looked like, wow, this pool's going to be super busy. But our thought is that, as Dennis commented last meeting, you know, there's never more than say 12 to, you know, maybe 16 people out there at any given time. I think we can also work with with the design team to kind of brand this pool as a more spa-like pool, very serene and kind of more, I guess, call it like a therapeutic pool, but just have that very zen kind of theme about the pool. So it's not like you're thinking of the zero edge pools in, you know, I guess I'm thinking like Mexico, like a resort in Mexico, it wouldn't be that sort of, it's a resort style, but I'm thinking spa resort as far as that goes. So hopefully that helps address some of the concerns that we talked about and that we clearly heard from the public last week, or two weeks ago. And then we can also, I think Ryan Welsh mentioned the landscape in tract A and trying to bring in more pollinators. In our office, we have a group that is very proud of bringing the pollinators into the landscape, they actually call themselves the Pollinator Power Rangers. And we would be happy to work closely with OSAAC and the Pollinator Power Rangers to work on the landscape within tract A if there's a change or specific species that we'd like to show there to try to change the ecology of that area in the tract. So next slide. Talking about the trailhead parking. So the initial plan for this was 30 spaces and stretched kind of essentially across this whole open space area. The last plan that we showed you, the rendering actually had 12 spaces, but it was a little closer to the reservoir. So what we did was we asked the civil engineers to shift this to the west per the comments again from Ryan Welsh at OSAAC at the last meeting is to try to push it as far west as possible. And we were able to move this 52 feet west. And as Stephen mentioned, still screenable from 88th, but also gives the ability to get further away from the reservoir. So we thought that was very positive. We eliminated 18 spaces in total, and now we have a total of 12, which we'd be happy to obviously work with you if there were signage that is needed imminently or in the long term, the town could decide what to do there. The next slide on the environmental impacts, as I mentioned. So Ron, you know, we heard from about 14 residents at the last meeting. And clearly, obviously, the reservoir, the sensitivity to the reservoir was a concern. So Ron went out on May 27th. I'm not gonna try to purport to be an environmental scientist, but Ron is available on the phone. If there are any specific questions about that report, essentially what Ron did was he looked at six areas, he sort of diced, you know, kind of separated the reservoir into zones. Distinct ecological areas. He studied the southwestern rainage and inlet to HHR. The northwestern shore from the inlet passed the V-shaped cove. The remainder of the northwestern shore, he studied the dam, the southern shore and the eastern wetlands below the dam. And then he summarized each of those small ecological areas and his findings on that, including the area where the Park at Rock Creek is and the, generally the habitat and ecology there. So if there are any questions about his findings, I would turn things over to Ron at this point for any questions. And other than that, the entire team is available to answer any other questions that you might have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the applicants? Can we drop that share, that would help me see my, my gallery, hang on, let me. Cool, thank you, okay. Okay, Commissioner Ritchie. You're muted still.
Oh yeah, sorry, I have to hold the button down. I'm not sure if this is a question best for kind of the environmental consultant, the applicant or town staff. I think one of the big areas of concern is a level of activity surrounding the pool use. And being that, that's probably kind of potentially one of the highest activity areas within the whole site where you're going to get a concentration of people outside. And that's also the closest point to the pond. And I'm just thinking of an evaluation of like flipping the building so that the building is pushed up closer to the reservoir and the pool is more internal to the site. To me, that feels like, you know, you could, you could do the big windows in the clubhouse, you could take advantage of those views for, you know, different types of activities that you could market, but you keep the, you know, I guess your residents, I understand your residents probably don't, you know, they probably like the buffer of the pool, but from an impact to the wildlife, just thoughts on that, I guess, maybe from the environmental consultant first.
Do we have the environmental consultants on?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is Ron Bean, ERO Resources, 1842 Clarkson Street, Denver, Colorado. Yeah. I think the distance to the reservoir is the important thing. And, and as is explained in the meetings where that little V-shaped cove comes out, the reservoir, the actual water of the reservoir, and I can actually, I can provide a picture, wanted to, at this time of year, which is a sensitive time of year, is much closer to the 100 feet or even more than 100 feet from where the pool is going to be. So it's that little odd property boundary that jets into the Park at Rock Creek that makes it seem like it's the distance isn't as far as it is. I, I think the people are going to be on the trail, other parts are going to be a saddle brook. I'm not sure we gain much by flipping the building and the pool, particularly if the, if the pool is going to be landscaped and provide additional buffer and stuff.
Is there a gain though? Sounds like there probably is a gain.
The gain would be, in my, in my opinion, would be the minimus, it'd be minimal at best.
I can respond to, I guess, why we didn't consider that option. We were, and I was under the impression that the 100 foot setback applied to buildings, and so if we flipped it, we would be putting a clubhouse even closer to the reservoir than, than the pool. And the, so the pool, I think, is an outdoor activity, is, is a valid concern, but it's also in use, you know, four months a year or something versus putting a permanent building closer to the reservoir 100% of the time. So the studies that I understood from talking to our staff consultant was that the pool was something that should be considered, you know, as, as something that needs to be distanced from the the reservoir, but the buildings were the, the thing that needed to be distanced from the reservoir were recommended to be distanced. The pool is a little bit more nebulous, so.
And if I may, Chairman McCool and Commissioner Ritchie, the I think as far as stepping back of structures to the reservoir, if you end up putting the clubhouse closer to the reservoir, you're going to have this like large looming building adjacent to the trail, probably set up on retaining walls. And whereas with the pool, we're able to kind of step that volume back to the clubhouse itself. So it gives pedestrians a little bit of breathing room along the trail. It steps back structures and volumes as well. So from a sort of, you know, bulk plane, if you want to talk about the bulk plane of it, it actually helps out having the building adjacent to the street versus the pool.
Yeah, I understand from a pedestrian experience. Yeah, I understand from a pedestrian experience, I agree with you. And I think in this case, though, I think the higher sensitivity level would be to, you know, impact to the wildlife and, you know, in the birds in the area. And so for this particular instance, I think my, my preference would be to compromise the pedestrian experience along the trail in this section, understanding that it would be, you know, beneficial for other reasons. So sounds like, I mean, I guess we can talk more about that during deliberation.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to add that, you know, and I specifically looked at that V-shaped area that juts out into property and what the habitat was like there. And the habitat in there is mostly just mud flat from the reservoir fluctuating and things. You know, if you sort of, how I broke it out, the inlet that goes into some cattails and stuff and provides some, some very good habitat. And I think that's where a lot of the bird breeding has been noticed. Steve Jones in his paper noted some, some nesting in there. That's where the mink has been observed and things. And then you sort of go around into an area that's more of just a mud flat and, and upland grassland. So not really very much for breeding habitat. You could possibly get a killdeer or something breeding on those mud flats. But I did not see any. And right now is a prime breeding area. And then as you go a little bit further to the north, the, you start getting a little, the reservoir is levels out, it's a little more shallow, there's more emergent vegetation, you get some cattails and bull rush in, rush in there. And so a little higher sensitivity in terms of breeding birds and stuff in that area. So, so you know, the, the area closest to the pool is probably the least important in terms of breeding birds at the reservoir.
Okay. Question on timing. In your opinion, is overall bird activity, has that been kind of reduced due to the construction of 88th right now with all the heavy equipment and activity going on?
It, it was one-time visit, so I, being a scientist, I'm a little bit hesitant to come to conclusions. But I did not notice that any decline really in bird breeding at the, at the reservoir. I was a little bit amazed at the lack of songbirds and singing songbirds in the grasslands that were closer to the 88th construction. And that could possibly be due to, you know, some displacement from the construction.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant or the environmental consultants? Right.
Staff consultant is on the line too, if you guys have any questions for her.
I guess I would ask maybe the same questions for staff consultant, you know, in their opinion, is the, the pool orientation problematic or preferable, given its current configuration or to be flipped? Is the building more of an intrusion or the pool more of an intrusion? And then, I mean, if we did a one-time visit on May 27th and, you know, that particular inlet area is kind of the closest to the 88th street construction, do you feel like that could have impacted, you know, site activity? That is going to be kind of helping us inform our, our decisions tonight.
Yeah, I, I can speak a little bit to both of those issues. Rebecca Hannan, Smith Environmental and Engineering, staff consultant for the, the town. And the only, the only issue that I would additionally bring up, I, I agree with Ron on most of those points. I would say that there are some municipalities that when they are constructing kind of riparian buffers and setbacks, they also consider height of buildings within a certain buffer. And they do usually aim to minimize building height that close to, to those kind of facilities. So kind of the way they were talking about stacking, I, I do think there is a benefit to not having that abrupt building stop right there, not just from a trailer or pedestrian perspective, but also from kind of maintaining just a little bit more of an open viewpoint for, for some birds that are going to be in that reservoir. But everything else, I generally agree with. You're going to have seasonal disturbance at the pool. That seasonal disturbance is going to align with the nesting season for the birds. So that could be a concern, but, you know, we're also not talking about Las Vegas pool parties. I also talked earlier, I guess this was with staff, about the adaptability of a lot of urban wildlife is they will learn the habits of when people are at the pool, the pool's going to have certain hours, when people are on the trail, where people are on the trail, they're going to adapt to those behaviors. So those are all things that we would expect, even if you put a building there, if you flip it like we're talking about, they would kind of adapt to, to what is normal behavior in that area. Some species obviously more adaptable than others, but those were kind of my thoughts there. And then now I got into that one too deep. What was the other issue you wanted to address?
Just wondering if the evaluation of timing had, you know, kind of any impact from 88th Street that's happening for this construction.
My only other thought on that was, so Smith Environmental, we do a lot of bird surveys on construction projects, on CDOT projects. And CDOT standard buffer for a lot of songbird nests is 100 to 150 feet. Bigger birds generally will have more protective buffers. When you start talking about raptors, that's usually a quarter to a third mile. Eagles, they put a half-mile buffer on those. So when we are talking about smaller birds, the construction, I would think on 88th wouldn't be having a, a huge impact. I can't say, like Ron said, with, with minimal data, that there's no impact with that construction that's been going on. But roadside habitat that close to the road, I, I wouldn't expect a lot of birds to be displaced from that area. There was already, you know, a lot of vehicles going on there. Roadside vegetation necessarily isn't the best nesting habitat to begin with. So those are, those are my thoughts.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right. Looks like Commissioner Stewart, you unmuted. Do you have anything?
So I did just have one question and it was to the consultants as well. And that is if there are any issues with topography that might have impact on that design and layout as well.
Chairman Stewart, yes, we haven't quite fully regraded that area since this is a quick change. But our civil engineers are on, Cliff Dayton can address that. He's going to be digging into that grading and how the change will affect it. I think it can only help having that extra distance and breathing room for grade change in that area, but I'll let him explain as well.
Yeah, thanks, Diana. Cliff Dayton, ORNR Engineers and Surveyors, 120 Evergreen Drive, Evergreen, Colorado. I don't anticipate there to be much change in grade from the, either the shift that we did or if we switched building and pool location, there would still be retaining walls there. Those retaining walls might fluctuate a little bit, a foot or so, but I don't anticipate much.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? All right. Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and entertain additional public comment. Let's see, so I would like to ask that if you, if you made comment last week, I mean, you're welcome, obviously, to speak again, but if you could, if you, you know, repeating the same thing isn't necessary. All comments are in public record. I as well, I'm sure other commissioners have notes of what everybody said, and we've been, been listening and seeing emails. So you know, in a respective time, if you have something new to add or something related to the comments that were provided today, feel free to come speak. So the way we do that again, you'll need to raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you. Somebody from staff will unmute you. And if you're on a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and then I'll, I'll call your name and and have you speak. So give me one minute. Let me get my timer up. So I'm watching. All right. So I think Kelly McCollough, she jumped on. Why don't we unmute her since she's already kind of ready to go? And Kelly, if you could keep your comments to five minutes or less, we appreciate it.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Well, thank you for really looking into everything, but I strongly urge to really look in. Is anyone involved between all the committees and the builders? Are any people clients of each other? Or do they also work for people that are associated with any part of, you know, the person that's going to be building and everything? So that's first. Also, did you, are you guys aware of the, I got a letter, two letters today about the building over, across 88th, on the other side of Louisville, they're building office complexes and multi-development. So just keep that in mind. Louisville sent out public notices about this, the ConocoPhillips property. So we're going to have insane amounts of traffic even more once that gets going. The other thing, I have to look at my notes. As a member, as a resident of Saddle Brook, you know, these guys are not, you know, they're saying they want to be good neighbors of it and everything. Every pool I've looked at around our neighborhood, they're not really like right across from somebody's living space. You can go up to any, you know, just go look around. They are right across from Saddle Brook buildings. And, you know, and I don't think 12 people are going to be at the pool. I think there's going to be a lot more. So I really say, why don't they flip the pool to the 36th side of the complex or put it inside their complex? Also, I'm really worried, you know, they say a lot of things about Saddle Brook. Could you also see if anybody was involved in the building of Saddle Brook? Because they say stuff, but I think there are people that are involved with the new building that had stuff to do with Saddle Brook. So they knew full well what they did with Saddle Brook. So they keep saying we're too close to the reservoir and all this stuff. So keep that in mind. Also, as soon as they could, they flipped Saddle Brook from apartments to townhouses. And I fear they're going to do that with this complex too, as soon as the statute of limitations runs out. I'm worried about the ADA compliance and if there is, you know, income restriction, if they're going to be allowed to buy the townhouses that when I feel they're flipping, and that's only my opinion. So I'd like to see something looked into that. Also, sorry, I'm reading through my notes, trying to go quick. I don't know. It's just upsetting. I, I feel the environmental statements are not really, I feel people have just flipped and going, oh, it's okay, it's okay with the impact to our wildlife in the reservoir. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for really, and please really, really look into this and look into the building and all that and make sure, it seems like you're going to approve it because they've done all this work and how can you not? You know, they spent probably a million dollars getting this ready. And I think that's kind of also unfair that we wait till they spend that much money to approve. And I don't see how any of you are going to say, oh, no, no, we're not going to change the zoning. I think something needs to come up that we have a better way of trying to protect our land without letting all these developers kind of run roughshod over us. And every developer in Superior gets their way. I don't think we've pushed back really on anybody. So please take that into consideration and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Susan Bauer, you're up next.
Hi, thank you. Yes, good evening to everybody. Really appreciate your time and the continuation of this meeting. Having our public comments are important. A couple of comments, not to duplicate what's already been commented on last week or this week. To build on what Kelly was mentioning, we received notice from Louisville that they are going to be adding 2,236 high-density housing over in the ConocoPhillips property. I do feel that the statements made by Ron Beam and Rebecca Hannan are a little bit disingenuous. Ron, you haven't been out there year-round looking at the mud flats. The mud flats are critical habitat for avicets, which are a species of concern for Boulder County. This year, we had 16 avicets out there. The mud flats are absolutely critical for their breeding success. Our counts are significantly down this year. I know that you made a comment that you didn't think they were impacted, but we have empirical evidence from the citizen science that's been going on now for the fourth year in a row. Actually, if you count the Boulder County aquatic monitoring program, we would even have additional evidence that we can bring in to show what the counts are. But the counts are significantly down from last year as well as our breeding species are down. And we will have our report out later at the end of summer or first part of fall. But so far, we have identified 85 species and we have 10 confirmed breeding studies, breeding species so far, and that's as of May 23rd. The seasonal disturbance, Commissioner Ritchie asks about the the seasonal disturbance with the pool. I, I think that is a very real concern. Whenever there is activity over, even at Saddle Brook or on 88th, we see an impact. We are seeing an impact in our breeding bird study results right now as a result of the construction. The reservoir is nearly empty. It is sad. And there are hardly any songbirds. There's very few aquatic waterfalls. Even our birds of prey are down. It is dramatically noticeable. Now, will they come back after development? Well, that remains to be seen. But and that would be more a result of urbanization or having an urban forest that would be built around those buildings. But that's going to, doesn't necessarily replace what is there in that thriving ecosystem. That becomes a replacement for what was there. And elevation, I like to emphasize, an elevation gain is not a substitute for a setback. And the pool size, I like the idea that you can, that the developers can make the pool size more of a spa environment. That's great. But when kids want to be out there with their floaties and they want to squeal, that is going to take place. Now, if the pool was going to be restricted from Memorial Weekend through Labor Day Weekend, or at least from Memorial Weekend, that would be a significant compromise because the avicets breed between end of April through May. So having that minimal activity, especially from mid-April to the end of May, is really important for their success. And I think anything that we can do to help them be successful, we need to take into consideration. I also like to call out that in the plan, which we are not talking about tonight, but what's been called up before is the height of the sound wall from the highway. There is no spec as to the height of that sound wall. I do encourage that this planning commission look at the height of that sound wall, make sure that it's significantly higher than the height of the highway itself. And I'd like to mention that it's been eight years since the comp plan was revisited. A lot has changed in our town since 2012. I know that next year, this town is going to be revisiting the comp plan. We're one year away. I would encourage the planning commission to hold off with any recommendation until we can revisit the comp plan. I would like to talk about
Susan, if you have a place, that'd be great.
Sure. One final thing. Jim Payne, I think it was last year, went on record down at Town Hall to talk about the high rental ratio in the town of Superior as a whole for Rock Creek HOA. Be aware that Superior is turning into a rental community, and that is a problem. Is that what we want to be? Thank you for your time.
Hi, thank you, Susan. Drew, I got you up next.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, did you get some of that stuff that I said?
No, just start over. I'm just starting your time now.
Okay. So I'm Drew Lane, 1769 Morrison Court. I live in Saddlebrook, directly across from this property. And I'm not in favor of this project. I think it's too high-density for the area. And I think that the, I just got that notice from Louisville too about the new development. And I think the traffic on ADA Street is going to be a real nightmare if everything gets built on ADA Street. So I don't want to see that happen. I'm concerned about the developers selling off these condos individually, like what happened at Saddlebrook. And so now, you know, Saddlebrook's probably 70% rentals. And there's just not enough homeowners here to make the property work. So I think there should be some kind of verbiage to prevent the individual sale of the units. And, you know, if he wants to sell the whole thing, then that's a different story. But that causes a real problem for it to run an HOA. I'm concerned about the soil over there, whether it's, you know, going to be a problem putting buildings on there. And I'm wondering if the financing is in place for this project? Because I know a lot of other developments are having problems. I'm concerned about overflow into that trailhead parking. I don't, I don't think that's going to work at all. We have a big problem with parking in Saddlebrook. And there just doesn't look like there's enough parking in that project. I think that's about all I have for now.
All right, thank you, Drew. And last, Natasha, you're up.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
If you could introduce yourself and your name, address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Natasha Flyer, 1640 E grit way, which is also, by the way, in the Saddlebrook community. But I don't, I'm one of those interior buildings. What really puzzles me is I really read through the very detailed comprehensive plan. And one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to preserve, you know, high-value open space. And there's only five land parcels left within Superior. That's it. I mean, it's all developed. And so the, and there is, and none of the other parcels are high-value. So I'm like, you know, you can look at 76th Street, you can look at the Richmond property, you can look at the Rogers property. Great, develop those. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I looked at those properties. I went, find, there's nothing there. For instance, Clemente, that was another one that I thought was really kind of because Commissioner Harper in the last meeting said, well, in terms of preference, I think we really need to go with medium density as opposed to any, to the alternative. Well, guess what? The Clemente, the preference was commercial. It's not commercial. Those houses are over $1 million that was built on the Clemente property. And, I mean, there is almost nothing left. And the ones that are left, honestly, there's zero high-value open space on them. So go ahead. I mean, I don't think you'll get any, you know, pushback from anybody in Superior on those little parcels that, you know, that are left downtown. Everybody's happy downtown. So, you know, this is the only parcel. If not this parcel that we're going to do, then you might as well wipe off from the comprehensive plan, high-value open space. It just will not exist within Superior. The other thing I have with regard to this property, I should tell you that I'm actually ADA qualified, I have multiple sclerosis. So I, I look through the plans and I can only see 18 ground floor units. And that's, and actually Commissioner Stewart's comment last time also got me thinking. Because I really wanted to see, and they said, because they also said they had 18 senior living. And I could not count in total 36 ground floor units because I don't want ADA, and I'll tell you, I'm way from a senior. I got another 15 years to go before I'm a senior. And ADA people should not have to compete with seniors for ground floor. That is, that is really not kosher. And, and I'll just echo some of the comments that people made. You know, Superior's population is stagnant. The Daily Camera, on May 24th, which was last weekend, published basically, well, since 2018, Superior has not been growing. We're already highly-built residential. We have three bedrooms, two plus bathroom, the summit, the ridge, Saddlebrook. You know, we're adding 500 cars in that space, I mean, with 180 people. I mean, it's not. And really, what I find was John Ross, sorry, Ron Beam's statements because, first of all, as a scientist, you know, you don't make a judgment on two hours. That's like saying, I'm going to make a climate prediction on one year of data. Well, you can't do that. That's not scientific. But what's interesting is the ironing of this closing statement. And I will quote, "In closing, I think the real value of a small urban-centered reservoir such as HHR is the opportunity to educate the citizens of Superior on bird nests and species profiles of observed birds and other aquatic natural resources." Well, this is, that's what our whole conversation was about in our last session. In Superior, we want a natural area open space park where we can educate people. Not 180-unit housing. Put that on one of your other five parcels that's left.
Natalie, if you could, could wrap up, please? We're about five minutes.
Well, I said, thank you.
Oh, thank you, sorry. All right, so next is Sean Gorman.
Sorry about that, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you are, yep, you're on.
Great, thank you. I'm Sean Gorman, I live at 1637 Reliant Circle. I lived here since 2002. I'm born and raised in Boulder, lived in Superior really since 1998. So I've been around quite a long time. I think my biggest worries are, is that the traffic on 88th is already kind of a real problem, especially when schools in session. It oftentimes takes me a long time to get out of where I live. And my only option to get out of the circle that I live on is to turn left or right onto 88th. So, so that's, that's a big deal to me. With that said, I know a lot of people have called in who live at Saddlebrook. And the parking situation at Saddlebrook is a problem, and it is a problem that affects me already. So I do worry about more cars and more cars being parked in that development. Because essentially on Shamrock, the entire street and into the circle is just overflow parking currently for Saddlebrook. And there's really nothing to say that when, when there's that many more units in the town that the parking will not just continue to become worse and worse. And I think my last point is that anybody who's lived here for a long time and got to see the reservoir back in the day is that that was a very busy reservoir that was full of migratory birds and fish and even deer sometimes. We had coyotes and all kinds of cool stuff in there all the time. And that reservoir was just rebuilt fairly recently. And it's, for anybody to try to, to make a judgment on what that reservoir is like compared to two or three years ago is really not a fair assessment. It needs to be, what was that, what is it like currently compared to how it was 15 years ago? Because it was a really amazing place to be. So I would like to see the town at some point be able to do something and have some open space again where that reservoir could really be utilized other than just sort of being a placeholder right now. It feels like the development is just trying to figure out how to work around it. So that's all I have to say. I thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, Sean. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Commission, have any response or anything that they'd like to say? Before I said, I do want to remind the, the public that's listening that I do want to encourage you to, you know, follow this through to the town board meeting. And our responsibility tonight is, you know, the final website, plan, site plan and zoning. So we have a responsibility to follow, follow the Chapter 16 land use code, which is what we're working through tonight. So, you know, continue to follow this through as it moves forward to the town board. Stephen, is that next, is that next week?
It is, yeah.
All right. All right, do any commissioners have any other comments? I think our next step's going to be to close the public hearing and go into discussion. But, yeah, Commissioner Ritchie.
I have one more question.
Commissioners, I would allow the applicant to make any type of response. Sorry. Oh, you're right, I apologize. Yep, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that, Dan. Yeah, if the applicant has any response to the comments that were made today, you have an opportunity to do that.
This is Dennis Cavallari with the Cavallari Group, the developer. I think most of the commentary was pretty much what we've heard previously. And my commentary is going to be the same. We're taking a private piece of property that, that has, take private piece of property that's zoned for a high-intensity commercial use. We're dedicating a large portion for open space and donating it to the public. And we're opening this up for the public use. So we think it's a great community benefit. Obviously, we, you know, the only way to do that is through the development. Nobody has ever come forward to buy the property and turn it into open space. And we feel that this is the next best thing that we could do for the community. That's, that's it.
All right, thank you, Dennis. All right, so Commissioner Ritchie, you had another question.
Yeah, one more question of staff. I feel like I remember reading last time that detention's going to be primarily served or partly served through the ponds on the other side of 88th Street. Are any changes proposed to those ponds in order for, is there a capacity within those? Or just curious on that.
My understanding there's capacity for the western half of the site to drain towards the existing pond on the western side of 88th Street. And then the eastern portion of the side drains to the new pond within tract B, C, the smaller one, just, I guess it's got to be B, it's right next to tract A.
And do we have any concerns about, obviously, water quality shouldn't be affected, things like that? No regrading has to occur on those ponds or, I'm just, just curious?
The one pond on the site is brand-new, net-new, has a water quality pond. So there will be grading in that area. There's no grading in the wetland area to the northeast. And we've heard from testimony at the last meeting and then the environmental kind of addendum that the treatment or the actual improvement within tract H will actually improve the water quality that filters down into the reservoir in its current state. So things will be better than they are currently.
Great, thank you.
All right, the only other things that came up that I jotted down from our last meeting there was, and so I'm just going to put these out as reminders if. Good, if you have any additional questions or comments, just speak up. There was lighting on the monument signs. There was trash receptacles. And there was a desire to increase the affordable housing percentage. They addressed the pool pinch point and the parking. If that throws out any reminders to anybody, feel free to speak up. Otherwise, I'm going to move forward with closing the public hearing. Does that sound okay to everybody so we can have discussion? Head nods? Okay, all right, cool. All right, so I'm going to officially close the public hearing again. So that's closed. And we'll move through with discussion. You know, if you need any clarifying questions to Dan or Stephen, that's fine. And so I'm going to just work through my screen. So Commissioner Woody, you're next on my ready bunch screen here. So, comments, discussion?
Yeah, the only comment I want to bring up, it's kind of along that affordable housing. When we had the discussion last week, the applicant said that they were willing to put something in the deed about keeping the affordable housing percentage or whatever. And I think they were in conversation with the town already. So I just, it would be great to kind of put that as part of our submittal back to the town board that, that they work with the applicant on, on the affordable housing percentage and getting into the deed. So just a reminder.
Yeah, and Commissioners, I can, I can speak to that too. It's actually been included in the development agreement itself.
Okay, that's good. And you can remove my point because I think I'm done. Thank you.
Your point, your point is the percentage, the 80% value? Is that what you're talking about in the 30 years? Are you talking about the number of units or everything?
It was the number, it was somehow guaranteeing, or I'm not sure the right language, but making sure that we keep a constant affordable percentage. If the unit was sold or turned over, that it's part of the deed so that no matter who owns it in the future for 30 years or whatever period of time, I guess I'm not going to dictate the period of time, but for a substantial period of time, that it's affordable housing is, is kept in that place.
Okay.
And the development agreement actually has a provision that states that nine dwelling units will be permanently affordable and will be subject to a deed restriction to record it against the property.
That sounds good to me. That sounds a great step, a great step because it's the first. Again, I would applaud them because this is the first applicant that I can remember that's brought this forward. So, so kudos to the applicant for that. Thank you.
And Commissioner Harper, I've got you up. And Commissioner Stewart, I've got you next. Commissioner Harper.
I have no further comments or questions.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart. And then Commissioner Maia, you're next.
I'm fine with where we are. I don't have any additional questions or comments.
Okay. Mr. Maia, and then Commissioner Ritchie.
Thanks, Chairman McCool. I want to thank all the residents for chiming in with their comments this evening and at our last planning commission meeting, as well as the dozens of emails that we've received. Those emails do come through to everybody, so we do all read them. And also thank you to Mr. Calavari, Calavari for kind of clarifying the situation with the property. This property is not owned by the town of Superior. So what we have in front of us is a development application that we need to give a thumbs up to or a thumbs down on related to the land use code in Chapter 16. And so that's what we're discussing tonight. And I think, who was it? I didn't write her name. The lady who went after Drew Lane, who spoke last, was that it's for, I think with the changes the developers made and the attention to which they have put into our concerns as a planning commission, I feel, I feel very strongly about the project. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritchie, and then Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, thank you. I, is, I would recommend that the trail be concrete. I think, you know, just given the recommendations from the environmental consultants as well as for ADA accessibility, I think that trail and for town maintenance long-term. I think that trail and for town maintenance long term makes sense for that trail to be concrete. I'm torn on kind of the impact to, you know, the wildlife in the area, very sensitive to doing what we can do to minimize the impact, understanding that, you know, things are resilient. There are, you know, birds on the south side of the reservoir within probably fifty feet of those existing parking lots and existing drive aisles. And so, you know, I've gone back and forth in my mind. Clearly, the birds that are there now are adjusting to Saddle Brook being a lot closer. Is that ideal? I don't know. Would they be, would there be more otherwise? I don't know. But, you know, just watching kind of the activity over there. I guess I'm just going to have to rely on the environmental experts that both the town has hired and the, you know, staff's vetting of this. I mean, if I think if other commissioners are interested in pushing on that, I certainly will. But if I am kind of the only one voicing concern, there's not much I think we can do on that. I'm interested in a condition of approval or just a carry forward if staff can make it happen on restriction for monument sign lighting. And just final note on this one, again, high marks for affordable housing and getting that in there. Let's just make sure that it's meaningful and effective. And just continue to encourage staff to push on that one. And whatever we can do to make that permanent and meaningful for our town. So but again, really applaud that as well.
And Stephen, do we have monument sign lighting condition documented that?
We've looked at it. The lighting levels are, I mean, appropriate, I guess, in terms of, you know, the illumination and everything. I think it showed a three thousand Kelvin, you know, light in there. But if we don't have to have a lit monument sign either, or it could be not internally illuminated. It could be, you know, downcast or uplit or whatever, and it wouldn't have probably the same same impact. And I didn't get a chance and talk to them about everything else, but wasn't wasn't something I revisited. But I certainly can before the board meeting and see what we can we can do to make sure that that's not. Of all the things that they've been asked to do, I think lighting would be a pretty easy request, but can't speak for them. So.
Yeah, I think either like, if it's internally illuminated, it'd be shut off at, you know, whatever our code says for property next to residential development, if there is a provision or nine P M or, you know, some reasonable discretion there. Or, yeah, like a downcast, downcast, you know, shielded light, I think would also be acceptable if they want lighting twenty-four hours a day.
Commissioner Reese, you're up. And Commissioner Miller.
All right. So Commissioner Ritchie, you're not alone. As I sat here and over the last week, and then just sitting here in the last five or ten minutes, I can actually feel my heart beat picking up. You know, this is, this is a difficult one for us, you know, the wildlife side of things. What's, you know, traffic impact, you know, we have to kind of look at that. But, you know, overall, we're here looking at a couple of different things, you know, to approve this application as proposed. Taking a step back and comprehensive plan, you know, it has been seven years since the comprehensive plan's been worked out. And we've actually discussed this in several of our meetings. And at this point, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, you know, times are changing. People's habits are changing over the next, you know, just from all of the COVID stuff that we're going through. We don't know where this is going to lead us. And so part of me is torn.
You cut out, Jason.
We lost your voice. You're not muted, but we've lost you.
I don't know where I lost you or you guys.
That's just a just a minute ago, just a few seconds ago.
Anyways, I'm torn, right? It's, it's a great, it's a great project, the design, the way that they've done about making changes. And I was the one who, you know, brought up the swimming pool and the impact of the swimming pool. And I was really hoping that we could look at, you know, relocation of the swimming pool. Or, you know, maybe the applicant can try to figure out a way to build shields or some kind of, you know, sound barriers along the pool's edge that aesthetically look pleasing for, you know, the open space as well. So there's a lot of different moving parts. As a matter of fact, in time, I'm still torn on my decision. And so I've got to make up my mind pretty quick, but that's all.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Reese. Commissioner Miller, you're up. And Commissioner Harden, you're next.
I'd say Commissioner Malia pretty much summed up my thoughts as well. It sounds like, I feel for the public and the people who enjoy that reservoir. But we're not voting to buy this as open space. That would be a decision of the town board. And and they can still consider that. That's an option for them. But for us, I think what's put put before us is consistent with the comp plan and a better zoning fit than what it currently is on the property. So I don't have any other questions or comments.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Harton, and then I'll go last.
I don't have any any other questions. I think there's been a lot of great conversation and a lot of issues brought up that, you know, I, some I agree with and some I don't agree with. But on the whole, I'm okay with the proposal.
And I, you know, I've been struggling a bit with this. I have a couple of comments. Now, there was a comment about high value open space and a comprehensive plan. And I do want to make sure that the public realizes that those words are in there because of a considerable amount of work by by quite a few citizens over the last twenty years. And the acquisition of open space in this town is so far beyond what anybody dreamed it would be. Back in, you know, late nineties and early two thousands when we started this whole program. We evaluated Zeharius at the time. The property itself was pretty low on our list of acquisitions. But the reservoir was very high on our list to protect, right? And so we knew this day would come at some point. And like the applicant said, you know, there's been nobody coming forward to buy this property as open space. And they've sat on that property for quite some time. And our responsibility is, you know, does this, does this zoning change, you know, meet the the comprehensive plan? And it does. I mean, it's stated in there. That's pretty clear. I, you know, I was hopeful for a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet, you know, buffer in my, you know. But that's a lot to ask, right? That's a considerable amount to ask of a property owner to give to give back to the town. But, you know, what I see and the protection that's been made, the landscaping that's been presented, the, you know, the hard trail with the fence preventing access. I mean, I can't, I can't see anybody doing any better of a job than than what was proposed. But I do share Commissioner Ritchie's and Commissioner Reese and all of ours, I'm sure, concerned about making sure that this is protected. I do believe that urban wildlife is a different different animal than than, you know, when we get farther out in into nature, urban wildlife, I have no doubt. I mean, you watch it, you know, the way they adapt is incredible. So I'm pretty comfortable that once this is done and things settle down, I no doubt it's going to affect, it's going to affect that reservoir for a year or two. And then it'll it'll settle into what it's going to be going forward. So. So with that, I, you know, at this point, we have we have three, 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 four, three resolutions in front of us. I don't know if anybody wants to take a stab. And the conditions, I think, are been addressed already with maybe the exception of whether we want to put something in on the monument sign lighting. Or whether we want to, you know, put any comments or recommendations around, at least asking the town board to consider or look more, look more closely at shifting where the pool and clubhouse resides, you know, to the inside. That's, that's, I'm not opposed to, I don't think I want to make it conditional, but I'd certainly be open to making it a recommendation. And Dan, do you want to, do you want to, or Stephen, do you want to, I assume we're hitting two A, two B, two C, right? We're.
Yeah, in that order.
In that order. And the Commissioner Ritchie, do you want to throw in the lighting as a condition or just? Are you comfortable that staff has our?
I am confident staff has our back, but I'm going to go ahead and add it as a condition anyway. Because I do think it's it's important, both from a character perspective along Eighty-Eighth. This is entirely a residential neighborhood and just to make sure that we're being sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood.
And is that in the final site plot plan? Is that where that goes?
The final plot site plan, correct.
So, so Commissioners, I was just see if you get a sense of what the applicant's position is concerning that. I didn't think we could do that at this point, but. Yeah, I mean, I think that's okay. I mean, because, because, I mean, my understanding guess is that the lighting is compliant. So, you know, if we're going to include some kind of condition, we just want to see, I guess, kind of what they're, whether that's agreeable to them or or not. So I think. You know, if that's okay, then I'll ask. Sure. And I think that's fine. That Dennis, that would speak to that?
Sure. Dennis Cavallari, I don't know what the specific request is, but it doesn't sound like we have a problem with it. Maybe somebody could articulate a bit more thoroughly as to what the concern is and what the what the request would be in the final on the plan.
Yeah, I guess my condition, my suggested condition would be that if the sign, any signage is internally illuminated, that it be turned off by, I don't know, nine P M.
Whatever we, I'd say whatever we've been asking of businesses, right?
Yeah, right. Whatever's consistent with, you know, other neighborhoods next to residential or other commercial developments, nine P M. I don't know the number that comes to mind. Or that the that the light is a full cutoff down.
A downcast light.
If it's, if it needs to be on past nine P M.
We're fine with that. That's not an issue at all. The only thing I might like to maintain some illumination on is like a number or something for emergencies.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Addressing numbers, different story, right? You know, if you need a small directional sign with a down, yeah, but the the big monument signs.
All right. So that that'll come a little bit later. All right. Okay, you want me to, I mean, I can, I could just take these as is. If that's okay with anybody. Are there any other conditions that, I don't, I don't think there were. I think that was the only one that we were. Other than the affordable housing, which is already in the development agreement. So. All right. Let's see. I'll start with four dash two A. Planning Commission Resolution Number P C dash three, series twenty twenty. Recommend approval of a resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior, recommending approval of a final plat for Rock Creek Ranch filing. Number twenty-five, case number F P dash twenty twenty dash zero one. I guess as written, conditions are in there. Yep. All right. So we have a motion on the table from Commissioner McCool. Is there a second? I have a second by Commissioner Harper. And. Bill, should I do roll call?
Sure. Harper?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
McCool?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Sorry, I'm hesitating here. I should have asked this question ahead of time. If we approve the plat as is with property line separating tract A, but we want to discuss a wider buffer for the final plat site plan, are we going to run into an issue with compliance on setback?
Not necessarily. I guess it depends on whether or not you're asking for tract A to enlarge. Subback doesn't, I mean, the two are not mutually exclusive, but they're not completely tied to one another either. So.
Right. Okay. Then I'm going to trust you. We have options later and vote yes.
Pardon? Yes.
So that passes unanimous. All right. The next one is planning commission resolution number P C dash four, series twenty twenty. Resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior, recommending approval of an amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch P U D to rezone lot one, block one and tracks A through C of Rock Creek Ranch filing. Just rephrase that. And tracks A dash C of Rock Creek Ranch filing, number twenty-five from regional activity and deployment center R A C to residential two dash A zoning case number R Z N dash two zero two zero dash zero one has written. There's a motion on the table.
A second.
A second from Commissioner Ritchie. Roll call vote.
McCool?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Pardon? Yes.
All right. So then Commissioner Ritchie, do you want to address something here with the?
I don't know. I'm just going back and forth on this buffer issue if it's enough, you know. I mean, it's one of those things. Our consultants are saying it's enough. Our residents are deeply concerned. I'm concerned. Is enough enough or is, you know, should we rely on, you know, you know, a little more caution? My guess is the applicant's not going to be amenable, you know, to redoing their site plan at this point. My concern is primarily around the pool. I think that's, you know, that's kind of the issue on that. I'll leave it there and see if, see where everyone else is.
I mean, I'm certainly open to, I mean, I, I'm not, I don't know that I'm comfortable conditioning it. But, I mean, I think if we can get staff to make sure it's, you know, within our, oh, I don't know what the best way is, but that we can pass this along to the to the town, to the town board in a little more elevated way than just saying, make sure you listen to our minutes. Stephen, do you have any suggestions?
I mean, you could certainly provide me with specific direction on, I mean, I can relate that the pool remained a concern for planning commission. But if there's, and is it an occupancy? Is it the fact that the pool exists at all as a, you know, the fifty-five feet? Is it all of those things? That's the kind of help that would be helpful or direction that would be helpful.
Yeah, to me, I think it's the activity level, you know, particularly given conflict with, you know, active season for, you know, birds in that immediate vicinity. I think the design, you know, I guess I'm going to trust the, you know, the environmental consultants that the the building there isn't better, you know, than the pool itself. So I think for me, the concern is around the activity level. And. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, no, I was going to say the same. And that's my biggest concern. And, you know, there's, there's pergolas out in their design and whether those can be rotated around to be, you know, between the reservoir and the and the pool area and then have some kind of sound buffering panels, you know, within it. You know, just some kind of concession or some kind of built, built structure that kind of buffer that would be my preference. Because as you said, I don't. Because as you said, I don't think the second is gonna change and the buffer distance is gonna change, but be able to create some kind of a noise buffer.
Yeah, and we said, we, you know, our, our ability to, to have a property owner and even be able to manage activity level, I think, is maybe even impossible, I don't know, but, but if we, but if our concern is that pool is too close to the reservoir, then maybe our recommendation is just that, you know, considering a relocation of the pool so that it's farther away and/or buffered from the reservoir. Commissioner Harper?
I was just, I was down there again this afternoon watching what was going on and the birds didn't seem particularly disturbed by the earthmoving equipment that was running along 88th Street. So, I'm, I, I think I kind of agree with the developer on this, that I don't think the pool would be a great, have a great impact on the bird life.
I, I would agree with that. I think that, you know, it's gonna be hard to predict what level of activity will be there at any given time. And to add conditions based on the unknown, I'm just not uncomfortable with. The other thing is that, I, I think maybe tying conditions such as this adds undue burden to the applicant and this process. And I'm just not sure, once again, if we really need to do that or if we need to, you know, pass this on and trust that this applicant has been working in good faith to make this the best possible place and the best possible project for this location.
Yeah, we're not looking, condition is not being discussed. It was just, do we want to ask Stephen to, you know, provide in his report that, you know, we're concerned about the location of the pool and basically pass along to the town board with just a little bit more home for them, you know, asking them to listen to our, our comments, but.
That sounds like a condition to me.
No, condition would actually be written into the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but that would actually be written into the resolution, which I don't think is the intent. I think we're just asking Stephen to put in our report. The, the resolution would go as, as is, that we would ask Stephen to put it in his report to the board. And it could be as simple as several commissioners, you know, are struggling with the location of the pool and the distance from the reservoir and just ask the town board, look at it, you know?
Yeah, I think it's fine to, you know, if that's something you wanna kinda pass along, you know, that I'm sure Stephen could, could at least pass along to the trustees.
Why don't we just leave it as a few commissioners? It's not, you know, everybody doesn't feel that way. Is that acceptable to Commissioner Ritchie and Commissioner Reese?
I mean, I'm gonna, I'll save my piece and you guys can see.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Okay, alright, I'm gonna, I'll just ask Stephen if you could just pass that along, you know, in our, in the, in this staff report as this goes through. And we, it won't be conditional, just, but there were some commissioners that were concerned about the, the buffer between the, the development and the, and the reservoir and most specifically the location and closeness of the pool to the reservoir.
Correct.
Alright, alright, then we have, I'm sure nobody else said anything else, I don't see any hands up. Okay, so, alright, this is Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number PC-5 Series 2020. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior. We're recommending approval of the final plat site plan for Lot 1, Block 1 of the Rock Creek Ranch filing number 25. Case number FPSP-2020-01. The motion on the table by Commissioner McCool.
Seconded.
A second by Commissioner Miller, roll call vote pose.
We add, make sure we, the condition related to the signage is included in the motion, that's okay.
Yep, can I amend the motion still, Dan, or do I need to pull it off?
That, yeah, that's fine, why don't you?
Friendly amendment to add the condition related to signage.
Why, why don't you just, motion to approve the, the final plat site with the added condition that, and I can read that, I can read the, what I have down. It says applicant shall update their plans indicating that internal, internally illuminated signage shall be turned off consistent with other commercial development in the town or that such lighting is fully downcast past 8:00 PM. So I think you could just do a motion to approve the final plat site plan with the added condition as, as stated.
Okay, so we'll just say so amended. As our attorney spoke, and we have a, let me just get a second to that. I amended that. Okay, we have a second to that from Commissioner Miller and roll call vote.
Okay, Harper?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
McCool?
Yes.
Richie?
It's a very reluctant yes.
Pardon, yes.
Alright, that motion passes unanimously. Alright, thank you, everyone. Alright, so next on the agenda is a, is everybody okay? Do we, anybody, we good to continue on, 2:35, or checking before we start? No quick breaks, okay? Alright, so we have a public hearing to review and comment on a replat, final plat for Lot 1, Block 1, Rock Creek filing 17E. Subdivide a 7.2 acre parcel into 94 individual lots and 31 associated tracks to allow a previously approved condo development to be marketed as for sale townhomes. This property is located north of Colton Road and east of South Tyler Drive. So, on, can open up the, oh, do we have a, so when they open up the public hearing, that's open, and fellow street approved of publication.
Yes.
Visual, yes, alright. And does staff have a presentation on this?
I do, so I'll share my screen now. Alright, again, Stephen Williams Town Staff. Tonight's second development application involves a subdivision request within the Resolute property, which you guys I think are familiar with, but just south of Autry Reservoir. Representatives from Cobell Urban Homes are in attendance tonight and have a presentation of their own. The subject property, known as Lot 1, Block 1, a filing 17D currently is within Rock Creek Ranch, located north of Colton Road and east of Tyler Drive, as illustrated in this map here. As you may recall, this property was platted as one lot and approved for development with 94 condominium units in 2018. The site, overall site plan from that application is illustrated here. You can see the location of the dwelling units, several of which were sited on the south shore of the Autry Reservoir. Another set of units, a different, different building type, were sited south of their primary access drive that runs south of those, those plateau or the, the reservoir units. And then the, the way that those other units were referred to are plateau units facing east and west, just north of Colton Road. So I show you that, just to give you the, the same context of what's proposed here. What we're, what we're looking at is a plat to create individual building lots for each of those 94 units. So there's minimal changes involved related to the approved final plat site plan that will be done administratively. And there's a condition on the application that that be completed within the 60 days associated with this final plat, or this, this final plat change. The, this needs to come back to you because any subdivision of land of more than six lots is a major subdivision and requires both a planning commission and a board, board review. So you can see that the alignment of the roads, the access points for Lake Shore Lane are all consistent with what was approved previously and the same kinda configuration of the, these spurs running north-south off of Lake Shore Lane to provide access to the plateau units to the south are all consistent as well. There's easements that remain in place, one of which is this raw water easement that extends from Colton to the reservoir. Another one is the pedestrian easement that connects the existing trail south of the reservoir that's within the Bell Flatiron's development with West Flatiron Crossing Drive further to the east. So staff has verified also that the amount of parking and open space provided will be consistent with the original development approval. And as I stated, we will update the final plat site plan to reflect the proposed lots and tracks proposed through this plat application. So the plat application includes the required plan sheets. In addition to the overall plat map that we just saw, four partial plat maps are included at the scale illustrated here as an example to better clarify the proposed lot and track sizes and their relationship to one another, as well as those easements I mentioned. Widths of lots are illustrated to range between 17 feet and 31 feet and they vary in depth from 51 to 67 feet. The widths of private drives have all been verified to continue to meet fire access standards and are consistent with what was approved with the previous subdivision. This application also included this track table, which clarifies the proposed use of all 31 additional tracks that are proposed, 11 of which are dedicated as open space and drainage. 15 are used for parking and five are for those private drive roadways that we saw earlier. Staff has noted a handful of technical corrections through the staff memo and offline, one of which is to better illustrate ownership and maintenance. This is still gonna be a privately owned and maintained area. All of the alleys will be, will be owned by the developer and maintained by the developer. The other plat sheets with this, within this application are, some of them are shown here. There's a series of easements that are being dedicated and there's also a series of easements that are being vacated. So the three reflected here are easements that are being dedicated, a lot of which involves like just vacating the easement and then reestablishing it in slightly different configurations. So we have easements for public access, emergency access, and utility easements reflected here as being dedicated. And then there's four sheets that are reflecting what's actually being vacated, three of which are consistent with the, the previous four. The dry utility easement showing on the top right is what's being vacated through this plat and not established or reestablished at this time. The applicant has conveyed that they're still working with Excel and CenturyLink to finalize the locations of those easements and that they'll be adopting a blanket easement through a separate document to address those needs as they get their plans finalized. This referral was sent to all of those agencies and we didn't receive any objections to anything. And I actually asked for additional information just to clarify where they were in the process and, and receive that. So I know they're down the road and getting that resolved. And then this is just a couple of illustrations to help clarify. On the left is what's proposed to be vacated with the darker gray. And then on the right's what's proposed to be reestablished. So you can, you can see that the, it's, it's very consistent for both the emergency access easement and the public access easement. Where we have more of a change is with utility easement actually getting larger. So part of the, is that, part of the reason is for the utility extension to, to go further is so that they can provide individual sanitary lines to each of their units. So you can see that, you know, there's more of a utility easement here in what's being dedicated. And then they also extend further south down the, the drive aisles that run north-south to those plateau units. And a little bit further to the north, and that's just to provide individual lines where previously the design, when there was condo development proposed, there was one line drawn for each cluster of, of units or each building. That's more or less what's being proposed tonight, so that's staff summary. As I mentioned, the conditions are that include, you know, getting that final plat site plan administrative amendment done within the next 60 days. And then staff has also put a condition in based on some of their narrative language that they rely on. They were seeking to rely on a party wall agreement and they're gonna need to provide utility easements for that. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance tonight and has a presentation of their own and they'll be available for questions. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have myself right now, too.
Alright, so questions first? Lots of no's, alright, so the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening, everybody, my name is Peter Benson with Cobell &amp; Company. Good evening Chairman McCool and Commissioners. I also have Scott Komiak here with me tonight and he'll be talking a bit when I'm done. This is our first time in front of the Planning Commission in Superior. Unfortunately, we're not there in person to meet you for the first time, but we will, we'll make do. A little bit of background on Cobell &amp; Company. I run Cobell Urban Homes, we do a variety of development. We create communities for residential, urban infill, retail, mixed use, and office throughout the front range, as well as resort communities in Grand County. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our involvement with this community. We, Resolute is still involved, Resolute was the owner and still owns the commercial piece. We got involved when the previous builder didn't go forward last year. So we joined a joint venture with Resolute to be the managing partner. So we'll build, market, and sell the, the community out here. And I just wanna talk through the real, I mean, Steve did a great job kinda going through the details and mechanics of the, of the plant. But the real reason we're doing all this is because we just wanna create fee simple homeownership, homeownership special for our homeowners. And also lay out the, the maintenance structure for the future HOA and or the metro district. This new plat does not change the approved density, the architecture, the built environment in many a way. It's really just changing a lot of invisible lines and easements so we can do fee simple townhomes. And when you look at the homes and the building designs, they look and smell like townhomes and they would be considered single-family attached townhomes. And they're not stacked units. And normally you do condominiums for stacked units. So frankly, when we got involved, we, one of the first questions we asked is, why is it a condo plat instead of just doing these simple townhome lots? So that's really why we're here tonight and why we're changing lots of lines on the plat. So with that, I will take any questions and or turn it over to Scott Komiak to go into a bit more detail and respond to Steve's report.
Any questions for Peter before we pass him on? Alright, oh, everybody's good, okay?
Hello, Scott Komiak with Cobell Urban Homes, 5291 ECL Avenue in Denver. Again, thanks for having us this evening and Steve, thanks for the very concise report. I, I, I think I'm not gonna burden you with repeating many of the things that you've gone through here, but as Peter actually did take a lot of what I was gonna say already. But I, you know, I just wanted to reemphasize that this is consistent with the final plat site plan. Really, not a lot has changed at all. It's just refinements for constructability and moving the project forward here. I think going into, you know, the tracks and the easements and the lots are all consistent with the, the building layout. So I, I think with that, I mean, if there's any questions to specific technical elements of the project, I'd be happy to address it, but I don't wanna burden you with anything extra that you don't need to hear.
One non-technical question, what's your construction anticipation schedule?
We, we hope to get started on this right away. Actually, we are working with Public Works right now through the, the final grading permits and actually finalizing the civil plan. So we hope to start sometime later in June.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I've got one. Can you explain in, in the application, I think the summary that Steve?
Can you explain in, in the application, I think the summary that Stephen put together, there was a conversation in there about whether it would, there would be an HOA on this property or a part of the metro district? And can you explain kind of the thought, the thought process, at least what Stephen summarized was that your preference was to do the metro, tie into the metro district? I wasn't sure which metro district you were talking about and what are the advantages, disadvantages of, of doing that?
Absolutely, would be happy to touch on that. The project itself is currently already in the Colton Metropolitan District. And if you recall, that district was prepared to and enacted to fund and maintain the infrastructure for Autry Drive and, and actually some of the, that roadway and the infrastructure related to that. And we, so this property will be paying mills as it relates to the maintenance and paying off of the debt of that. The, we don't want to kind of create too many overlapping entities for maintenance. So since we're already in that Colton Metropolitan District, we have the ability to kind of put all of the land that's outside of the building footprints of the townhomes into the district to provide the maintenance for all the landscape and the roads. If we didn't go that route, you would actually put them into a master association in which then it would, it would, it would do the same thing as a metropolitan district. It all would, it would do is provide another entity for the new homeowners to kind of basically work with. So they would have a master association and the district. Now they're just going to have the district. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it did. And again, this is where I'm getting way out of my expertise, but you guys have seen this probably because you're developers. Over the past year, the Denver Post has just taken apart metro districts because of how they've been used, probably inappropriately to fund developments and left the homeowners with huge, huge tax burdens that they never get out of. And do you have any thoughts or comments on that? Again, I'm not saying that's what this is, not saying that that's where we're headed, but it, when I saw it, it brought back all these articles I've read and again, I'm not an expert on it.
And I, I apologize, I don't have my video on. I tried to start it, but the, the, it wouldn't let me do that. But I, regardless side, yes, we did, we do follow those, the press on the metropolitan districts. In this case here, just a couple, a little bit of background, the, again, the, oh, here we go, start my video. Thanks, guys. In this case here, the, the capital that was put into the district was for the infrastructure that's already been constructed. So that's all been done already. This, this portion will be put into the district really just as a maintenance. It will be, the developer will be funding all of the infrastructure that is on this site and we will actually be, and the district will be there to maintain it. So it will be paying, just like you would be paying either to a district or you'd be paying to a master association in this case, would be the same.
Do you need a service plan amendment to accomplish this that the board will review or was this already contemplated in the metro district?
It's, it was already contemplated in the district, but the district will have to do an election and the next election is in November of 2020.
But the board won't review the service plan?
That is correct, that is correct.
And if I can add to that, the only reason we're saying one or the other now is because the district board doesn't, they don't have elections until November of each year. So they can't officially act on that, the metro district board until November, but that's our preference is to do it that way. And a little bit of background, Cobell has done a number of significant metro districts over decades and decades. And I don't recall all the stats, but Buzz Cobell, our president, has been on some of those for 20 or 30 years and seen them for the full payback and not had any go the way that maybe the press has talked about them. And as Scott mentioned, the, what we're adding, talk, what we're talking about adding is the maintenance of landscaping and the snow removal in the alleys. And that's going to be either through the HOA or the district and really the same cost to the, whether it's in an HOA or district as a maintenance fee. So it's not going to be an undue burden, they'd be paying for that whether it was in an HOA or, or the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so we have time for public comment on this item. We have two, just two members from the public that are in right now. Is there any public comment on this item? If so, you can raise your hand. You're on a phone, you can press star nine, click this to raise your hand. All right, I'm not seeing any. All right, any other questions for staff or the applicant before I close the public here? Seeing none, no. Yeah, well that closed, public hearing is closed. All right, any comments from the commissioners? Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody just want me to read the motion?
I don't have the resolution up.
All right, so this one does have conditions. So this is a Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number PC dash six, Series 2020, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a final plat for Rock Creek filing ranch, a Rock Creek Ranch filing number 17E, case number FP 2020 dash zero two, as written with the following conditions. Prior to consideration by the Board of Trustees, the applicant shall make minor technical and red line corrections. The final plat is identified by town staff. The applicant shall update his plans to provide necessary easements to accommodate utilities within 60 days after approval by the Board of Trustees. The applicant shall submit the FPSP associated with this application to the town for administrative approval. And I think that was, matched all the conditions on the memo Stephen, so. Yeah, all right, so I got a motion on the table, Commissioner McCool, is there a second? I'll second the motion. All right, we have a second, back to Mr. Malia. Fellas, you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes, Miller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
McCool?
Yes.
Richie?
Yes.
Harden, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. And we'll move on to staff announcements and miscellaneous. I know there's some commissioner announcements out there too. So Stephen, you want to take it away?
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, yes.
Appreciate it.
Yep, you're quite welcome.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Um, I don't know if I, it's my place to announce or I, Jason and Anthony want to make their own statements.
All right, Commissioner Reese?
All right, so today I've provided Commissioner McCool my letter of resignation from the planning commission.
I know, no, no, no. I didn't accept it, I have not replied or anything.
Rejected.
And I, I outright rejected it too, so.
And then rejected, so. But it's been, it's been, I've earned, I've learned a tremendous amount and we've had, you know, it's been a transformational time for Superior as evident by tonight's vote and everything. So we've done a lot of good stuff and, but my commitment to Monarch High School softball is ramping up again and I just don't feel like, between that and my work and some other things going on, I can commit enough time to do a, do a, a job that this position deserves. So everybody's work and friendship. I'll be here for the next meeting, but after that, the end of June, I will be out, out of that chair and hopefully we'll bring in somebody else. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for all of your hard work and I always appreciate when you chime in and speak up, you always add a lot of value. So if you have, you know, any spare moments over the next years, if you pop open a planning commission packet, I would, I would always welcome to hear your thoughts in the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I just like to say that it's, it's been a good group and I've been really fortunate to work with commissioners that I have here. So it's bittersweet to see both you and Anthony Stewart go at the same time. You guys have been here for the whole time and I've been here for almost five years now, so. But I always appreciated the respect that you guys showed staff and just the relationship that we've had. So you'll be missed, so, but I totally understand as well. You guys have been on here longer than I've been at the town, so.
And you're glad you're there. I was going to say that I was also resigning, so look, you, you were on top of it again.
Sorry, yeah. I let Jason give his resignation, I just stepped all over here, sorry.
Commissioner?
I concede the floor.
Go ahead, then I'm going to, I'm going to thank you, but you can make your.
No, no, so I also wanted to say thank you to all of you and that I am also resigning my position on the commission. My letter will follow, it should be with Commissioner and Chairman McCool tomorrow and also with the Board of Directors. So it's been an incredible ride the past five years and I've really enjoyed watching our town grow and kind of help molding what our town will be in the future. So it's just been a really great experience. And much like Jason, work has just taken me in so many directions that I don't feel like I really have the time to dedicate anymore to what we're doing here. So again, thank you and, you know, I'll still watch you and make fun of you and.
Be on the attendees list.
That's right.
I'm really going to miss your perspective on ADA and senior housing needs. You are so insightful and so that has taught me a lot when you bring up comments. So feel free to chime in in the future, but you've been very helpful for me.
You know, you've challenged me many times on the commission and it's always, always comes out, everything always comes out better when that happens, so. Got to miss you.
Yes, gentlemen, thank you both for your service. Appreciate it, Jason and Anthony. And I, I agree with Commissioner Ritchie, especially with Anthony's attention to ADA issues and housing and senior housing issues. That's, that's, you always kept coming back to those issues, Anthony, and that, that's going to help me in the future to remember to bring that up and to look at that and to make sure that those folks are recognized. So thank you.
Somebody's going to need to champion that, for sure, for reminder.
Yeah, in the relatively short time that I've been on the board, I'd just like to say thank you for all the good advice you give us commissioners, it's really been appreciated. So thank you again.
Yeah, it's, it's really terrible to have to do this via Zoom, so it's unfortunate, but uh, yeah, timing's, timing's timing, you can never control it. So no, hopefully announcements from Miller or Witty because their reappointments are up as well. I want to make sure you guys are still on board so that we actually have a planning commission moving forward. We'll get the announcements out and everything, but if you guys have any surprises for me, let me know soon too. Getting a, a good no from, from Witty and a poker face from Miller, so that's perfect.
Let's see what PBSD's school calendar looks like next year first.
Understandable, yeah. Otherwise I don't have, I mean, those were the, those were the major announcements. We did send a poll out and I, I've been kind of swamped getting these two together for you guys, so I haven't, I think that the next PC meeting is technically going to be on the 23rd, so I guess I'd clarify it with Commissioner Stewart if you're going to, this is your last meeting or if you're going to be able to be with us through the end of the month as well as Jason.
I will be here through the end of the month.
Okay.
But I did want to clarify, when I started, I was told I'd get a gold watch, so where is that?
I'll talk to Martin, that sounds like something that's up his alley. May not be functioning, but.
Might be gold paper. All right, is that everything, Stephen?
I think so. Thank you guys for your time again and this was a, you know, we never have, try to do these two meetings at once, but uh, it was needed, so I appreciate the thoroughness.
Yep. All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
All right, see you guys in a few weeks.